We'll do the, kind of the budget last, but I want to go over a couple of update items just so everyone will understand kind of what we're, what we're doing. As you know, we've been working on website, IT, all of the things that it's going to take to make those, get those improvements made. In the budget, when we get to it in a few minutes, we do have the full-time IT position filled in the budget year. So we know that once Dylan gets off of his workers' comp and gets in, we'll be able to get him full-time IT, we'll add his replacement in the fire department. That will help us with all of website postings, website maintenance, social media, all of that stuff. So we'll have a full-time person to do that. It just so happened that the person who we had doing that internally got injured on a, on a job, on a fire call. So we've been a little delayed in getting some of that stuff done. Dylan's on workers' comp right now. As you know, we can only do so much with an employee who's on workers' comp without violating the workers' comp. So we've been trying to do a little bit of that. The reality is, we just got delayed by that. As soon as he can get freed up or he's not on pain medication and can drive, they'll release him to limited duties and then we can pick up on that part. So that helps us with getting things posted to the website, managing the website, pushing information out, all of those things to be done. So it's not being ignored, it's just, we got, we got stung a little bit with that injury and that slowed us down some.
You're welcome. Yes.
We're, we're, we under, that's been a weakness for a long time and the management of that has been a weakness for us. Having Ross upstairs from the police department to help on the Facebook side of it has been huge for us. Our, the website, the way it's designed and the way it is, it doesn't, and I don't know the technical behind this, that's why we're hiring somebody. But the, the, when you send something to the webmaster, the host, to do that, his recreation of those documents or those things is not very social media friendly, it's not very website friendly, to be honest with you. Just the conversion of that and how some of that stuff works is, is kind of older technology and we understand that. So we've been having to push out things to the website and the same things out to social media through two different sources to make that work. So there's been some duplication there, but we do have a plan. Luckily, we have the person for that and they're in this budget for the new year. So just know it's not being ignored, it's just been slowed a little bit. The second item for you, there's been some discussion about storm drainage as it relates to Cumberland Drive and those developments along Cumberland Drive. So what I want to do is pass around three photos for you. The first photo is the inlet inside the storm drain or the storm detention pond where the water's supposed to go into the detention pond and make its way out through that. That's a photo of the detention pond itself. Those, those are the same photo, we'll, we'll pass that, those around. Now you'll notice a couple of things with the detention pond. First, if you, if you look on the grade on the side of it, you'll see where waters come in and it's washed mud into the detention pond. The way a detention pond is supposed to work, the way detention pond is supposed to work is you put silt fencing around the pond, you govern through the silt fencing the amount of debris that gets in. You also limit where water comes in, so water can only get into the detention pond through the, through the storm sewer system, right? Water should not be making it into a detention pond through the sides of the detention pond as you see here. What should happen is your storm water should all be managed on-site. That storm water is directed to storm drain inlets, those storm drain inlets then fill in the detention pond and the detention pond releases the water, clean water, or as clean as it can be. Your detention ponds should not be in such a way that water from every direction can come in, fill it with mud, which reduces the capacity for the detention pond and also releases mud as it goes out. We've had the complaint from the lady, I apologize, I can't remember, Ms. Thomas, where she has filed a complaint with us saying, "This thing's full of mud and it lets the water out and it does all these things and this discolored," and she is absolutely right. No question about it. So, all of this is governed by the state. The city doesn't have the ability, obligation, or ability to go in and manage storm water. It's all done by the state until you get to a population above 10,000 and then it's directed back to the state. Municipalities can go in and get certifications, which I have, certifications which MICA has, so you can make recommendations to the state for these things, but we don't have the full enforcement authority until we're obligated to, to take on MS4 storm water. But with that, we go out and we visit the site and if you look at this picture, what, what you should see is silt fencing all around this pond where there's no water that makes it into the pond from the side. All the silt, everything else is managed on the individual lots. The water runs off the lots in a cleaner manner into the storm drain system, makes its way into this pond which should be clear, and then discharges. So we go out, we inspect these things, I go out and I see this, which is clearly, in my opinion, absolutely valid reason for that subdivision and the grading work on the subdivision to be brought to halt. You can even see on this photo where the mud has washed in from all these areas and it's even degrading the size of the detention pond itself. So clearly, in looking at this from someone who has a certification, this is a violation that should shut this down. There's no question about it. But this is not our photograph. This is the state's photograph. We were telling everyone, "We're working with the state, we're doing these things, we're working to get all these things done, we've submitted this to the state, we've done these." This is the state's recording of this, not our recording of this. The state didn't shut them down, the state didn't enforce a penalty, the state sent them a letter demanding that they remediate it. So when we're having the conversations with Ms. Thomas and everyone else saying, "We're doing all we can, we're working to take care of the videos, we're working to submit the information, we're working to do these things." In this case, we're working against the state in that we would send this to the state, which the state already has, and they didn't close them down. So we're doing all we can to work with the state to make sure those things are done, but this is what the state took pictures of and this is what they didn't shut them down with. So until we get to a population of 10,000 and until we get true enforcement authority, the most we're able to do is submit these to the state, which they already have, and just continually ask them to enforce those regulations until such time as they can. The answer we got from the state was, the email attached to this says, "You're welcome to go take your own photographs and submit them to us and we'll review," but this is what we take a picture of. So Ms. Thomas, in an email, I think she, she expressed to you guys that according to TDEC, they have 2,600 subdivisions under review and six people to make the inspections. I don't, I can confirm or deny that, I don't know. But what I didn't want to do is give the appearance that we are somehow ignoring that thing. I have walked this storm drain basin from literally this spot through the woods down the stream to, to Cumberland Drive at the bottom, looked at it, there's clearly mud, there's clearly dirt, there's clearly debris. MICA went out and videoed it on a rain event so we could determine whether or not the, where the discolored water was coming from. Clearly, it's coming from here. We gather that information thinking we can send this to the state, they're going to be fine. Now we have evidence and this is what the state sent us back. I wish we could do more, I wish we could push. We're pushing as hard as we can, but if the state says this is their, this is their inspection, then we can't do more than the state's inspection. I wish we could, we're just kind of, we're as disappointed as Ms. Thomas. So far, this, this came from the state.
Yes.
So I don't want to speak to what, what they've done. I know they said they sent a letter demanding the remediation, but beyond that, they've taken no enforcement. But when we went out to view the subdivision and found what we found and then we got the state's photo back, at that point, we know we're, we're, we're not a player in this game. I wish we were. Now, once we get above 10,000, once we do MS4, there'll be an investment that needs to be made by the city, a mandate actually, of about $125,000 to $150,000 a year, simply because that's the cost of it. You have to have someone to, you have to have MS4 coordinator, you're going to have to have an engineer, you're going to have to do your annual reports, your summaries, invest our enforcement, all of those things. So once we do get above 10,000 and this becomes our responsibility, we can police these things, but that police, policing cost directed back to us is going to be 125 to 150. We also, as the city, need to be somewhat careful in that we can submit these to the state and we can make our complaints and make our case and all those things. And the state is rightfully, if they're saying they have 2,600 subdivisions and six people to enforce it, I can see where these things would pass by. But once we become MS4, we're required to do something called an annual report. For every one of these that we're beating the state over the head about, as soon as we get to 10,001, they're going to bring their picture to us and ask us what we're doing to remediate that. So as much as we want to, to enforce those things, I think we need to be more cooperative in attempting to assist the state rather than giving the state a reason to absolutely mandate their duty to us insofar as they may just slow down. You know, they, they know where everyone is. So there's no effort on the city's part not to enforce this, we're just limited with our enforcement capability and then the liability that comes, comes from that.
Can we take these kinds of considerations?
Possibly. But the, the answer to their argument to that is going to be, we're, that's a state enforcement issue, not a city enforcement issue. So it would depend on, it would depend on what your stomach is at the time to, to make that argument. Now, once we become MS4, where it's, where we have the ability to do that, absolutely yes. No question about it. There's a gap period there that I just don't know the answer to. Right. Now, again, yeah, absolutely, once we get to that threshold, absolutely yes. It becomes much easier, it becomes more expensive, but it becomes easier to manage. Now you have some teeth. There is a piece of one, if you look at the very back, there's, there's a, there's a piece of a fence that appears to be about 20 yards long. The, the fencing should go all the way around it, there's no, there's no justification in my mind for that water to be that discolored or to have that much silt making its way into the detention pond, because for every shovel of silt that makes its way into the pond, that's a shovel less capacity the detention pond has. They enforce, they enforce every bit of it. That's why, that's why when, when we went out and saw what we saw and then the state sent this back and they said, "We see the same thing," 100% of your storm water management or your erosion protection, EPSC, erosion protection, sediment control is actually the term for it. All of that includes silt fence, water discoloration, turbidity, all of those things, all under the same regulations and guidelines. So, again, we've attempted to explain that to Ms. Thomas, we've attempted to intimitate that out in email, but this is literally what we received back from the state as a part of our effort to follow through. So there was no effort on our part to ignore or follow through, we're just completely limited. The best, as I explained it to Ms. Thomas, there is a street light out on the road that's a state-owned street light, the bulb's out, the street light's 30 feet above the ground and you want us to replace the bulb with a six-foot ladder. It's just not out, we just don't have the capacity to do it. Not that we don't want to, but we're just, just in kind of a weakened period and we understand that, we, we get it. We're, I believe her complaints are valid, we just don't have the enforcement capability to remedy the complaint. Next thing, I'll get MICA to pull some, some pictures up. As you know, a storm came through, we're working to run the chipper service and do all the things we need to do to, to clean, clean that up. The chipper service is still as limited as it was before in that it's a residential homeowner assistance, it's not a storm debris cleanup system, we just don't have the capacity for that. Now, we are running the chipper service on some extended hours to make sure that, obviously there, there are more piles that are compliant, so we want to serve as much of that as we can. And we've also worked to be somewhat lenient on that. We understand what the regulations are, but we also understand this is not a regular event. So we are working to have some on-site judgment by the crew as to what they can or cannot get. So we're not, we're, we're not so stuck to the, to the policy, but we need to adhere to it, we're also trying to provide the most service that we can. For the piles that we cannot serve, we're going to, we've been asked this question a few times, we're going to put this up on the website, this is Dice-Lampley Road. The drive to the left is the drive into the out parcel. So if you go to the back of Dice-Lampley, we, that's the 25-acre parcel that the city owns. We're, MICA and the crew have installed some gravel on the road, we put some cones on the inside of that. So what we'll do is keep the cones marked off, we'll put this on the website. So people who do want to bring in, that's looking from the south, if I'm coming from Crow Cut, making my way, that's coming from Cox Pike. We'll put this on a map to go out. So people who want to come and drop off their storm debris that the city can't pick up, they're welcome to load that, bring that out there, unload it on-site, we'll push it off and maintain that to kind of give them a location to drop things that we can't pick up, but also help to encourage cleaning up of those sites. There's no charge for that, just to kind of get that debris off the road. So we'll, we'll get that out there, make it public. Hopefully, we have people participate in that program to, to get it cleaned up. So as much as we can provide those services, we certainly want to. So those are a few updates. Thoughts, questions, concern on any of those?
I think that's a great idea.
MICA Sullivan.
Right.
So, so, yeah, he, that's one of those where you kind of think outside the box, how can we improve the service without improving the service that we can't do? So those guys work incredibly hard to get that done, there's no question.
Do they chip it? I mean, once it's there?
No, we, we, we don't have the ability to chip that stuff. So what we'll do is maintain the same chipper service that we had, we'll, we'll drop off our chipped debris out there, any limbs, debris, stumps, other thing that makes their way up. If you're facing that road to the left, there's a low point, there's a low point in both directions, but to the left is what we use. We have a bulldozer out there, so what we'll do is crush it, drive over it a few times to, to compact it as much as we can, push it all out into a pile and it will just sit out there as anything else would. So honestly, it will probably help us from a fill standpoint a little bit, depending on how that compost works. But we'll, we'll get that information out and push it out so everyone can get that. So, so, budget, I, I gave each one of you copies of the budget worksheet and I want to kind of go down all of, all of these, but give some disclaimers so everyone will kind of understand where, where we are and then I'll get into the line items. As it relates to the COVID-19 impact financially on the city or all cities across the country, we're no different, we're going to experience some of those, there's a question mark as to what level. I'll give you the information that we've gotten and then let you know what we did to address that. Also, with some projected revenues, you may recall that we had talked about the opportunity for the 2015 property revaluations, that if the 2000, I'm not, 2020 property valuations, if the 2020 number had been the same as 2015, we were projecting an increase of about 13%. That, that was what the increase was in 2015. Assuming that things had not gone down since then, we were projecting internally another 13%. That 13% in the coming year budget would have generated about $240,000 to the city. Not that the city increased property taxes, the city's property tax rate would stay the same, but the value of the properties would have increased and that's how that, that, those dollars would have been brought about. There's been a decision made, apparently at, at the county, to where that property tax valuation will not take place in 2020. It will take place in 2021. So the city would not realize those revenues until the fall of 2021, not the fall of 2020. So just knowing that, just know that we had kind of considered that as an opportunity going into the coming year budget, that's no longer an opportunity. So that 240 anticipated is now zero as we're, as we're looking. So that would have put us lacking that revenue. Then the coronavirus hits and there's an impact that, that's going to be felt, although we don't know to what extent. So in working with the state and getting some information from the state, we've been able to take a couple of educated guesses. As it relates to the city's sales taxes, the city local sales tax, we're projecting right now a decrease of about 5%. That decrease of 5% is about $100,000 this year over last year. So we know going into next year, we're projecting a $100,000 decrease in local sales tax. We get sales tax from a couple of other, one other primary sales tax and that is the state shared sales tax. It's about $770,000 this year. The state has told us that there's going to be a reduction in state shared sales tax as well, everything's going to, going to get hit. So right now, we're, we're projecting that to be down about another $100,000, about 15%. So our local sales tax will be down 100,000, state shared tax, state shared sales tax will be down 100,000 and then we're projecting a couple of other decreases. Building permit revenue, we're projecting to be down about $40,000. And the related facilities fund, because a portion of building permit money is divided facilities and operational, we're projecting another $35,000 reduction in facilities. So to put, to put that in small terms, we're projecting right now that our revenue next year will be $300,000 less than our revenue this year. So that 300,000 has to be found somewhere. So that's one side of, that's the operational side of it and we'll get into these numbers in just a second. The other revenue that we get from the state, the state street aid money that we use to resurface streets with, they're projecting a 25% decrease in state street aid money. That would take us down from $300,000 revenue this year to possibly 225 next year. So with that, know that state street aid, we're down 75. General fund operating, we're down 300. That's the bad news. The good news is, we're built for it. You may recall a couple of years ago, we put some protections in place as it relates to our reserve fund. Where before, our reserve fund was, we didn't really have a reserve fund, we just had overages in a budget or under in a budget and it was kind of called a reserve, but you lived off that. We never had a true reserve fund that you put away and you never touch, right? So we enacted an ordinance that required, la, last year was the deadline, we met it a year before, that we were going to put every year 10%, an amount equal to 10% of the general fund operating account would be put in a reserve fund, never to be touched, right? And looking at this budget right now, that would be an amount of $578,000 in today's terms, that's what we would be required to have in reserve.
Total not put into each year.
That's what, we would have to maintain that balance of the 578. We met that last year, a year early. We have, on the agenda tonight, we, we have discussed an ordinance that would increase that percent, 1% a year for 10, 10 years to get us to 20%. As budgets grow, your reserve percentage becomes less valuable because 10% is not a lot of money of $7 million, it's less. So the ordinance you have before you tonight is to increase reserves 1% a year, equivalent 1% a year for 10 years, so that your reserve fund would be 20% every general fund operating However, if you're going to fund your reserve every year, funding that reserve becomes competition for funding your operations. You're going to have to be financially stable enough with your reserves and your budget to put an amount equal to 1% of that budget in your reserves every year or you're not going to meet that demand, right? So really, by doing that, you're committing that one, every year for 10 years, you're putting 1% of your operating budget into a reserve fund. That's difficult. However, because of the things that have been put in place, because of the actions that the commission's taken to safeguard some things, our budget has worked a little better than expected. The staff has been very good about watching their dollars, we've been very good about projecting revenue. So as we sit here today, as yesterday, in fact, our year-over-year cash balance and operating, our general fund operating checking account at the end of last week was running about $350,000 ahead of where it was last year. Which is, which is good for us, right? So I believe last year, we were looking at, as of Friday, the balance was $1,031,000 and I believe as of last Friday, same day a year later, the balance was $1,387. So we're plus a little over $300,000, okay? Year-to-year, straight up, bank account balance. So to, to make some safeguards, to make sure that we're being careful, we've done a couple of things. We, we went ahead and transferred from the general fund operating account to the reserve account, $110,000. So our general fund reserve account today is $700,000. The reason we did that is because we have forward funded the first two years of the reserve funding. We expect there to be a recovery in 2022, we know there won't be a recovery in 2021 because we're operating in a deficit, but we have an ordinance that's going to require us to put that money in. So rather than have our budget fight between funding reserve and funding operations, which we're already short on, we went ahead and forward funded reserves for two years. So funding our reserves is complete for the next 24 months. We don't have to fight that fight until the recovery comes.
So we're at 12% roughly?
Whatever the number is, yes, sir. So reserve is now set aside and by the way, we're talking about a true reserve. We're not talking about money that's in the bank that looks good during the strong times of the year, but you spend during the summer because it's lean. I'm talking about a true reserve that you don't touch. We have not withdrawn a single penny from the city's reserve fund since we created it. We've only put money in, we've never drawn money out. So we'll continue to do that every year. So we're talking about true reserve, not operating money that looks good part of the year, but it's not there the other part of the year. So we're fully funded for reserves through 2022. We moved $50,000 over into the capital account to protect for some capital, which leaves us roughly $200,000 in what we believe at the end of the year will be, not surplus, but excess dollars that we, we didn't show, okay? So we believe we're ahead of the game, cash position starting the year about $200,000. However, we don't want to count on that. However, we don't want to count on that. So when we're moving forward with this budget, this budget does not include that 200,000, okay? The budget that we have, the cash balances will likely be higher on the general fund operating account than what we're showing, but we're trying to safeguard those dollars. We're trying to not show that is available money because number one, we're not guaranteed it. Number two, we don't want a chance that we're not guaranteed it and we spend it. So we've built in a protection within the general fund operating budget as well. So reserves are fully funded. Our operations appear to be sound. We've made some cuts to accommodate the $300,000 loss, and we'll work lean for the next 12, 12 months during the coming year budget to make sure that those obligations are met and we're actually right on the math. Knowing that our revenues are going to be discrete decreased, we don't really have another option. We're going to have to, we're going to have to to make that work. So we'll get into some of the reductions as we get through the budget. But we have talked to department heads. I'm having two meetings with staff next week. One of the things that we have not included in this budget are pay raises. No one across the region is doing pay raises because no one knows what this is going to look like. No one in Williamson County, for sure. For your, for your math purposes, as you go forward, we, our pay plan right now works off 2% steps. So if there were to be a raise, there would be a 2% step as a part of that. 2% step raise to the city is $130,000 and change. So as we get into this thing, just know that to fulfill a a pay raise is $130,000 that we need to come up with. Everyone understands the circumstance where we're in. This is not Fairview not doing something, this is Globe not doing something. So the goal as we, as we look at this, this budget and this document, is it's crafted in such a way that we've made it lean, not so lean that we can't operate, we've been careful with it, but also with the hope that we're wrong on the financials and things look better six months in than we think they will. So we built it to survive the cuts with the hope we don't have to. If we don't have to, if the dollars come back our way, things function a little more nor normally than we would, then we would simply do an amended budget, go back and include the 2% raises, make those retroactive to July 1, and then function forward as normal within a somewhat reduced budget. So we're trying to be careful as as we go through. So with that, we'll kind of get into the line items and talk this stuff through. Does anybody need any kind of break or anything real quick? Is everybody good? If not, I'm going to take a 30-second break and go get some glasses because I can't see this, this thing. I'll borrow anyone's right now, I can't, I can't see a thing. As we get into this, we'll take about an hour to go over this, but this is going to sound like I'm cheerleading a little bit, and I don't, I kind of don't mean it to sound like I'm cheerleading, but I do mean it to sound like I'm cheerleading. The staff has gone over this, the mayor was here this morning, we kind of went over, we did go over every line item in the budget. The way we do that is every department head sits in the room and everybody goes down all the line items of every budget. We don't miss anything on that. We'll likely do that again. For the department heads and for the staff, every, everybody has bought into, we understand it's a difficult time. We understand that this, this is really not what we would hope, but they're also very appreciative of everything that's being done to keep it afloat, making sure it works the way it needs to work until such time as we can recover. That was across the room, and there was, there was no backing up from that. It was completely refreshing to hear and very appreciative from me to them to hear that first. Secondly, if you look at where the city was four years ago, the city was living off the school facilities fund. Lean times, they siphoned off of that money, property tax came in, they put the money back. The school facilities fund was their bank. That's how it worked. One of the first things we did was get rid of the school facilities fund, which had a balance of $600,000 when I got here, okay? So that's a $600,000 slush fund that was, that was being worked in. We got rid of the school facilities fund, so that slush fund goes away, okay? So now you're flying, you're, now you're flying without a net, right? We decided we're going to put a reserve fund in place over and above the operations. The reserve fund as of today is $700,000. Not a dollar of it has been touched, and we'll operate a budget with a $300,000 loss and still have $700,000 in reserve. If you take the $700,000 that's in reserve, that's been tucked away, you take the $600,000 that went away in the school facilities, that's a $1.3 million swing. If you take the $300,000 loss that we're talking about, that's a $1.6 million swing. If you look at the city's budget and the size of its budget, and you'd have looked at our financials four years ago and told anyone that four years later, you're going to take a $1.6 million hit, balance a budget and run the city, they would have laughed at you. We were no way prepared for that. The fact that we are prepared for that today speaks volumes about the work that's been done in this room. Everything that's done is to benefit the people outside of this room, and it's worked. So as we get into this, there's some difficult things that'll come our way, we'll have to make some adjustments, adjustments as we go. We know that, but there's no one who can look at where we were then, where we are today, look at a city of comparable size with comparable services, comparable resources, and tell us that that's a fail. It's just not so. So as we get into this, take a little bit of pride in the fact that this has worked a little better than we thought. We've safeguarded the services for the city, and we know that the future looks better than what the past has looked. And that, that's a big deal, a substantial deal for us. So can't be thankful enough for, for all of that work. That is, that's not an overstatement at all. So as we, as we go down the line items, I'll, I'll kind of do just a quick refresher, and then we'll get into the budget line items themselves. We had to project beginning and ending balances for each account every year. This has leaned out some, but I'll show you what, what those are. On the operating account, and we'll go down each column, the column to the left, the total, is the total of everything to the right. So the total is just a check factor for me, it's not anything of operations. So y'all know the way this works. We categorize everything, every revenue source as the fund that it's in, and we categorize every expense as the fund that it's in, so you can see the beginning and ending balance for every checking account that we have. So these are actually your checking account balances as they will be, and we'll get into the revenues expenditures as we go. On the operating account, we're projecting a beginning balance of $1,200,000. Again, that's, that's what we're projecting budgetary. We, the real reality is we expect that to be 100, $150,000 more. So just know we're expecting a little extra money in there, but we're trying to be cautious knowing that the rest that we have our way. Estimated revenue, $5,788. Total available, $6,988,000. Operating budget expenditures, $5,783, almost $5,784, for fiscal year ending balance of The, the main thing you want to do with that number is make sure that you don't end with less than you started with. Your other funds you can, because some of those are restricted use funds, that's okay, that's what they're intended for, but your operating account needs to end with more than it started with, or at least the same amount. And we'll get into that as we get into the budget. The facilities account, we're projecting a beginning balance of $220,000. Estimated revenue of $225,000. Available funds, 445. Operating budget, $293,000. Capital expenditures of $61,250, for an ending fiscal year ending balance of $90,930. As we get into those expenditures, you'll see while some of those are one-time expenditures, so those, that's not a recurring expense, that's a, that's a fluid account. I'm sorry, $61,520, to get us the ending balance of the $90,930. On the capital account, we anticipate to begin the year with $200,000. Estimated revenue of $60,100, using available balance of $260,100. Operating budget expenditures, $10,000. Capital expenditures, $250,000. Leaves you an ending year balance of $100. We know that that ending year balance will be more than $100. I'll explain that as we get into, into the, the budget itself. The Blue Cross Blue Shield adjusting account, you may recall that last year we changed our Blue Cross Blue Shield health insurance plan and went to what's called an HRA, a reimbursement account, that reduced the city's liability on the health insurance side. We were able to keep what the employees pay level. There was no increase in what the employees pay last year, there's no increase in what the employees pay this year. There will be some changes to the plan, they're relatively minor, but given the climate that we're in, that's all good, all the rates will stay the same. The, we forward funded the Blue Cross Blue Shield checking account, that's what we pay Blue Cross Blue Shield out of. Every pay period, we take the city's portion of the health insurance cost and put it into the Blue Cross checking account, and we take the employee's portion of the health insurance and put it in the Blue Cross checking, checking account. So what we deduct from the employee goes into that account, what the city's portion is, and then we pay the Blue Cross Blue Shield bill out of that account. The $50,000 is really a safety valve. In the event something happens, we have an exceedingly high claim period, or we need to be careful with, with any other expense, we have that. Just know that we've been running a balance month to month in that account of about $48,000 that we haven't dipped into. We expect it to go up to 50. In the event of an emergency, that $50 would be available to spend in some other spot. You would be able, that's, that's city money. We have it sitting out there to be careful with. But just know as, if something, just an absolute emergency came up, that $50,000 is available out there. It's ours, we have as a safeguard. We haven't needed it in a year, we want to be careful with it, but it is a resource in the case things just really go bad. That's just a, we just want to be careful with those resources. Bowie Park account, balance of $98,000. Estimated revenue, $10,080. That $10,000 could be 1 million, it could be 100. The estimated revenue is, they're typically year to year, some contributions made to the park in some ways, some want to make a small day, small donation or some other thing. We don't know what the playground looks like, we don't know what the other stuff looks like. So we budgeted for the standard and customary donations which are made. However, we don't know what that looks like for the year. We don't expect it to be less than 10,000. Available funds, $108,000. Operating expenditures, $12,000. Capital budget expenditures, $50,000. For an ending year balance of $46,000, we'll get into the expend, the $50,000 expenditure when we get into the budget. State street aid, $300,000 to begin the year. Estimated revenue of 223, down from 300. Total available funds, $523,000. Operating budget expenditures, $430,000. Capital, 40,000. Capital expenditures, 40,000. Total expenditures, 470. That will leave a year ending balance of $52,700. We're comfortable with that balance, knowing that we're, that that money comes in every year. We also leave that balance in there in the event of an emergency. Glen Haven Drive will be the example of that. You can budget for all these things, but unless you have some extra funding out there, you're, you're exposing yourself. So we wanted to make sure we reduce that exposure by keeping a balance in there that's, that's reasonable. Treebank account, $101,000 beginning balance, $31,000 in operating expenditures. We'll get into that when we get into the budget. Ending year balance, balance projected of $70,080. Drug fund, beginning balance of $85,000. Estimated revenue of 42,000. Total available of 127. Projecting $54,000 in expenditures for a fiscal year ending balance of $72,550. And again, we'll get into all those revenues expenditures in just a few minutes. And then the last line, that's grants and other programs. As we've, as we've discussed in the past, grants and other programs should be money in, money out. Typically, those are reimbursements. The way these grants, most of them are going to work is we have to expend the dollars for whatever project it is, and then we will get a reimbursement of that. There's some that work the other direction, but not most. So the way this should work is you see, all your grant revenues come in, all those grant dollars have been expended, and you have a beginning year balance of zero and an ending year balance of zero. That's intentional. So thoughts, questions on any of that before we get into just the general operations? There are, there are, there are two. One's for the Grant Intersection coming at 100. The other is the Sidewalk Project that runs from Bowie Lake to Park, or whatever that park road is over there. What's the, the apartment? Bowie Lake Road to the apartment entrance? Yes. Park Village. That's why it has to have it listed as Park Village. So, so the way we have this budgeted is those projects are going to go this year. We anticipate that we will spend $500,000 on each of those projects. So the, the million dollars of that you see is 500,000 for each, that's money in, money out. Now, we will have to cash flow that. The way that works is if we get into, we contract this thing out, we get an invoice at the end of a month for $300,000, we have to cash flow that $300,000 expenditure, submit that to the state for reimbursement. So the money doesn't come to us and then it's paid, we have to expend it and then be reimbursed. So as we get into those, we will have to be careful on, on those funds. Just know we have to cash flow that. Typical return's 45 to 60 days. You have to cash flow it for a long time, but you got to cash flow it for probably two months. So depending on what time of the year it is, if you get into this thing and it's February, you can probably cash flow it out of operation. If you get into it and it's July, you may have to cash flow it out of reserve. Just know that's not a operating cash flow, that's a capital cash flow that makes its way back to you. So bit of a difference on that. And then the, the other 270-something thousand dollars includes the governor's money for that, and we'll get into that as we, as we go forward. So page two of 22, and in the interest of time, I'll hit the highlights on these. And if anyone has a question on anything as you take this home and look over it, please email, let me make, let me know what that is. The budget, the budget ordinance document that's on the agenda tonight is a recap of this. It's likely that that budget ordinance, the numbers in that will change slightly. That's the purpose for, for having the two readings between one and two as you clean this up. So if after tonight, I go back and make those calculations and that changes, we will simply post those changes, make sure that works, and with those changes, with those changes, we will post this worksheet. So what you'll have on the ordinance will be the actual ordinance in the word form that you have in your packet tonight, with, with the changes, because it shows the year ending balances, plus your indebtedness is what that ordinance shows in your tax rate. So what we'll do is, once we get that ordinance finalized, we know it's in the final form, which is probably early next week, then we'll take that ordinance, have it posted as we need to, and then we'll also post this worksheet as the backup for that, for that ordinance. So anyone will be able to see the ordinance we're required to pass and the worksheet that supports the ordinance. We're not required to produce this, but we will produce it so that anyone can go in and answer those questions. So as we get into page two of 22, these are our revenues. Our, we do not anticipate a reduction in property tax collections. So our $1,910,000 in property tax collections So our $1,910,000 in property tax collections is actually a $10,000 increase. That's a rounding increase, more than a projected increase. That, that's a software function. Local option sales tax, $2 million. Right now, we are projecting just under 2.1 million. The 5% reduces that by $100,000, so that's how we got to the 2 million. Wholesale beer taxes, along with wholesale liquor taxes, are right on par with, with where we, where we were. So ironically, we do not project a reduction in wholesale beer, beer or liquor taxes. Minimum business taxes remain the same. Moving down the, the line to some of the larger ones. Cable TV franchise remains flat at 120, I believe. Both of those agreements are up for renewal next year, calendar year 2021. So we'll be able to go back and amend some of those as we need to, and likely see an increase on those, flat for this year. Moving on down the line, the next couple of larger numbers you see, the Facilities Fund. Again, we projected a decrease in the Facilities Fund, that, to that 225,000. Below that, building permits, we also projected a decrease in, in the building permits. Right now, the building permits remain steady. The building remains steady. We think the building will remain steady as long as the selling remains steady. Once the selling slows down, the building's going to slow down. So we're preparing for the selling slowdown. We just don't know what the economy does. If layoffs become permanent unemployment, that's going to have an effect on, on those dollars. We know that. So we're, that's a cautionary measure. Electrical permits, those were typically done, we, I think we generated $2,000 a year on electrical permits. We simply stopped issuing those and sent those back to the state. Moving down the list, the next large number you see, state sales taxes, 630,000. That's a reduction of over 100,000 from what we, what we had this year. We were at about 750 this year. Knowing what the states told us, we dropped that back to 630,000. We hope everyone's wrong on that in our favor, but we're, again, that's a, that's a one you have to be careful with. That's a big number. Moving down the list, the next large number you see on these is near the bottom of the page, $132,000 in city fines and court costs. We left that level funded because we just don't know what, what that looks like. The State Supreme Court has not given any guidance so far on how the courts will continue into the new fiscal year. Obviously, COVID-19 doesn't know what date it is, so we don't nearly know what the function of the courts will be. We've also had a significant decrease in police activity in the interest of public safety, personal public safety, not community public safety, just to reduce the contacts unless there's an absolute necessity to make the contacts. So with those reduced contacts, you're likely going to see a dip in the revenue, but we can't project that accurately. So we just left it as is. Yes, sir?
On that with the courts, every court.
Right?
So everybody should know something.
We, we met last week, Shannon, Gina, Chief Hughes and I met and put forward a short-term and long-term operational plan, just what, what they required us to do. Shannon did a really good job of, I mean, it was very thorough. Gina did a huge help on that. So we, we have identified how in the interim court would function here. Obviously, court days are horrible. If you come into court in Fairview, it is, is very difficult to do any business whatsoever other than court. Kind of a peek behind the curtain is the how we, how we crafted that. We're looking to do a Zoom contact with the jail as much as we can to limit the, the need to transport people to and from the jail, even if they'll allow us to transport people to and from the jail. There's a hesitancy on all jails to bring people in, or once they're in and they know they're not infected, they don't like for them to leave. So for that purpose, we think we can host the, the criminal docket, we think we can do remotely. For all other trial dockets and traffic dockets, the way we plan to function that is, we're going to purchase a pager system where we will run the pagers at, by a number of either 10 to 20. We'll divide up the court date by traffic, by traffic court, our traffic trial, how all that stuff goes, we'll separate those out. Then the way we'll function that is rather than come in the lobby, the lobby will be one-way, the court will be one-way. So what we'll do is move the metal detector to this door. We will set the police department tent up outside of this, so there's a dry space outside the weather in the event of inclement weather. We will distribute those pagers, call everyone in. So the next person up for their court case, they'll get, they'll have a pager, just like you get in a restaurant. We'll page them, they'll come up, they'll get in line. Once they come in, they will make their way in, they'll be the only person in the courtroom. We will not have public defenders or DAs in the alternate rooms. They'll be seated at either end of this table. They'll come in, handle their court business here. When they leave, they'll go one way out, see the clerk. They'll give that pager to the person at the clerk's desk. The clerk will then handle whatever business that person needs to, to give, and then get that pager to the next person on the list, and then we'll, they'll cycle through the queue to do that. The way we'll do that to make sure that they're there is we will, everything we'll do will be done in alphabetical order. They'll be given an alphabetical group, not necessarily A through M or N through Z, but 50% of the cases, whatever the total number is. If 50% ends at R, then that's where we'll be. We'll tell that to those people. We'll set the second half, the latter half for the second half of the day, the earlier group for the first part of the day. So you'll know A through whatever reports now. You're to come back every 15 minutes. If you're next on the list or number 11 on the list, you'll get a pager, and then we'll cycle the system through as best we can. That's the only way we know to keep everybody in, one way in, one way out. Make sure that they report to court, they have our document, and we've kept everyone safe in that, in that process. So more than you wanted to know about that thing, but. Absolutely. So hopefully, one day, we're able to have a holding facility outside to make that go. But with that, we're, we're attempting to limit people making their way in the lobby and, and through there. So one way in, one way out with the pager system is the best way we could come up with, ensure that we covered every, everything. But again, we don't know what those revenues will be, so we're, we're limited to that one, that 132. We'll see how that works. Next page, there's not a lot of revenue on this page. However, you'll see the interest for the operating fund at $12,000. General fund surplus property, because course of the year, we're going to sell some items as things wear out, is what it is. Part of that will go to the capital fund, part of that will go to the general fund. Part donations, again, our police department program donations, that's the shop with the cop, $10,000. Part donations, again, that's the same $10,000, just the annual miscellaneous donations. Retiree health insurance, for employees who've retired, they're eligible through the state code to be able to remain on our health insurance. We have two employees who do that, so that $1,500 is their contribution to the city's health insurance. Insurance reimbursements for property, $1,000. That's a plug figure, it will likely be higher, but we're being careful, we're hopefully being real careful and it's none, but. And then miscellaneous revenue, $10,000, because you're historically going to get receipts or things in that reimbursements or such that come in. Below that, you get to the revenue other. Not a lot of substance on here, except for the first big number is $60,000, which hugely helped us this year. Through our workers' comp insurance carrier, we're getting a dividend reimbursement of $60,000 this year. It's actually $61,000 and some change. So that $60,000 in revenue this year likely will not reappear next year, but it helped us this year with, with the numbers we're working at. So that's likely a one-time, one-time dollar. Moving down, you'll see the transportation projects at $1 million. That's the $1 million in and out that you, that we discussed from, from the state projects. LISO surplus, we're projecting $50,000 in sales from the LISO system to go back into capital to purchase equipment. In all honesty, that number's probably going to be closer to $125,000, depending on the calendar for how some of the things are able, eligible to be sold and when those things actually sell. So we've aired, we've, we've tried to air conservatively on that, but we know that there, there's a parking lot full of equipment that goes right back into the police department as we'll get down to in a few minutes. So that, that has been a capital goldmine for the city. When we get into the capital budget, you'll see what, what that is. But that, that, that program has been unbelievably successful for us. Below that, the next big number you see is the governor's grant, the $228,000 that we've gotten in. The discussion on the $228,000 was how to expend those dollars. General discussions were $31,000 for IT improvements, which we need to do. $35,000 for improvements to City Hall, primarily ADA accessible front doors and ADA accessible entryway will be the first component of that. It's going to be about $30,000. The second component of that, the $5,000, would be to install a pad and connectivity to the back of the building where the power comes in. We have generators capable of running this facility, this building, in event the storm's out. However, we don't have a concrete pad and the total connectivity for that. So the $5,000 of that will be to install the pad, make sure everything works, electricity runs both ways, and we install the generator out there so in the event of a storm event, we can function this building without power for a sustained period of time. The fire department can function, the police department cannot, obviously it's a part of this building. So the generator we got through the LISO program, I want to say we paid $100 for it. It will run this building and five others just like it. So we're, we're good for a while on power, but that will, that will help us out. So to think that we could have generator power to this building for $5,000 is pretty silly, but not complaining. So that's where we are on those numbers. The BCS, BCBS Adjusting Account, the 153, that, that amount does not total back up at the top. That's a check factor for me. That's not anything that, that is a part of that. That's, that will go away as we get into the, the finished budget. That's a zero, but that's a check for me as we move through this worksheet. Board of Commissioners, we, we did do a couple of things on this. The salaries for Board of Commissioners went up. The reason for that is we included, if you recall, the Board of Commissioner salaries will increase on January 1, which is a half year. So we included those increases to begin January 1 to balance that. Other than that, no changes. We did make some reductions to the travel and training, just because it's, we largely over-budgeted for that, so we just cleaned that up. Outside of that, the training, travel training is still available. We just cleaned up those line items and make them more realistic. Nothing else on there is of any substance. Those are all pretty standard, small numbers, exceptionally small numbers. Administration, every department going forward has the same line items as it relates to personnel. The administration, this year, we've added the Community Relations Coordinator, Richard Ross, who's doing all of our community, community relations work, including the Facebook page, all those sorts of things. Richard's done a really good job. Richard is still a sworn certified Fairview Police Officer. However, because he's not providing police functions downstairs, and we want to know what the total cost for police service is in addition to the community relations, we moved Richard's salary and benefits to admin, just so we can understand what those administrative costs are. We've also included in this the IT, full-time IT position that falls under there. So the, where, where Dylan was a firefighter, providing IT services as a part of an incentive pay, that incentive pay will go away, Dylan will become full-time part of IT. We will then replace a position in the fire department and move that forward. So the police department in its budget is fully staffed at 21. The fire department in its budget is fully staffed at 18. We moved those positions under admin to reflect the duties they're performing rather than the, the unofficial title, so to speak. I do, I can email that to you. The next page, under the operating budget for admin, we've, we've kind of worked to do some, some things to make sure we were careful. I'll, I'll highlight the big numbers, I hit the ones of operational concern. Legal fees retainer, we were at about $86,000 this year. We, we cut that back to 70,000. I'll get with Tim Potter on that. We're just, we're trying to find money where we can. Obviously, we have to have legal representation. Some of that money will go away anyway because of the Smythe case and some other things. We had some depositions from some frivolous lawsuits that have either been settled or will be settled, or dismissed, or will be dismissed, or regardless of their ridiculousness, we still had to have an attorney there for that. So part of that will, just attrition, we'll vet that out, but we did reduce that amount. We'll make sure we follow up with Tim. Legal fees other, not a lot of money, $2,500, but as we discussed today, there's always a legal other of something that will come up during the year. Workers' comp insurance, $80,000. Property insurance, $16,500. Insurance, general liability, that includes all other properties, DNO, directors and officers, $175,000. Those are standards through Public Kennedy Partners. The next largest, the next large item is the CDY Blue Cross Blue Shield. Last year, we budgeted $450,000 for that. We're going to be closer to $370,000 this year. We made the projection at 384. But you may recall, we were, we had to find $300,000 somewhere. We found 75,000 of that 300 in that line item, so that was, that was good for us. Also, two lines up under legal fees other, last year, that line item was $60,000. A good chunk of that was the Smythe case. That went away, so we did not have that recurring expense. So between legal fees other and the health insurance, we found half of the $300,000 that we needed to find to balance the budget. Moving down the line, we, we do have some increases that are unavoidable to us. Internet services increased just a touch. Website redesign was reduced because that will be completed by the end of June. Down the line, LGS system maintenance, $40,000. That's a local government software system. That's what we function off of every day. Now, a part of that, once we get the connectivity for all of the buildings, that LGS will likely increase by about $5,000 next year, so we can install the purchase order, purchasing system within that. That's a module of that software system. We don't have it right now because our buildings can't talk. Once they can talk, we will have the, that in place. Email, $16,800 is what it is. And then office equipment lease, commonly known to me as a racket, is copiers. But copiers and reproduction just cost money. Next page, Motorola system maintenance. You may recall that we're required, as a part of the Motorola radio system agreement, we're required as a partner in that to maintain, to participate in the maintenance system. That provides system upgrades, radio improvements, radio upgrades, that sort of thing, as a part of the overall maintenance system with the county. We have no, we have, that's a cost we must absorb as a part of that system. Moving down the list, the next largest item, $72,000 for Williamson County Dispatch. You may recall that a couple of years ago, Williamson County came to us and asked us to increase our, actually demanded that we increase our dispatch services contribution because they were next to nothing. We were paying $18,000 a year for 24-hour, seven-day-a-week police and fire dispatch. We agreed as a part of that that we would make those increases year to year, because we, we have an obligation to provide the dispatch. In the current year budget, we increased last year from 18,000 to 36,000. This year, we've increased from 36,000 to 72. We will likely increase another 36,000 next year, just as a part of the operation of the system. Let's just.
When does it stop?
The, 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 what they provided to us, that they said they was equitable funding to them was $184,000. I don't know that we see $184,000 there for sure. Could we provide our own dispatch for $184,000? Absolutely not. Is there some work to be done there? Yes. My guess is we will likely. My guess is we will likely, will likely be there somewhere around $120,000. I think will be the final number, but we won't hit that until 2022. Maybe 2023, depending on budget. So, but my guess is, we're projecting right now that the final number will be about $120,000. Yeah, or 2023. They understand that that's a big hit for small budget. They've been decent to work with, but the reality is, we have an obligation to provide dispatch to our police and fire, so. Animal control contract, again, through the county, $13,000, but that's a standard animal control contract. The county provides that. Utilities, for the building upstairs, $30,000 and $12,000 for total 42,000. The middle of the page is where there's some opportunity. Just, I'll walk you through what, excuse me, I'll walk you through what all that debt service looks like. You're at total debt service, with issued debt, the 2014 series is $257,000. Annually, $108,000 comes out of operating, $109,000 comes out of facilities, $40,000 comes out of state street aid. And then the 7062 City Center Way property is $43,000. So that's where you are with the debt service as it is issued debt. That is still 5% of our operating budget. Municipalities, your goal is to be 20, below 20%. An exceptional debt service would be 10%. For us to have a $6 million operating budget with a 5% debt service ratio is pretty unbelievable. The city's doing a pretty good job of paying its way as it goes, absent of some unknown, unforeseen things that are out of our control. One of those is two lines below us. The Fire Engine Lease, believe it or not, we're in the third year of that Fire Engine Lease, so it's moving forward pretty quickly. It seemed like where we're doing it, it's going to take forever, but we're actually about to enter the fourth fiscal year for that, so.
Three years is, uh?
Ten. The last year payment will be a little bit less than that. Year 10, I believe year 10 is $27,000 as it, as it went out on the, on the lease. The Motorola lease purchase, you may recall, we engaged in that last year. The good news for that is, we have two years left on that Motorola lease purchase. We will not have to engage in that further because the $20,000 Motorola system maintenance covers the maintenance of those radios and that equipment going forward. So we may occasionally have to purchase a radio if we add other vehicles or do other things, but the lease purchase goes away in two years. So we know that that $133,000 comes back to us. That's not a forever expenditure. Obviously, it will be absorbed at something else, but it'll be what we want versus what we were demanded that we, that we participate in. And then below that, the $15,000 regular agency funding for the Health Department, that is a year-to-year renewal. Municipal Court, there are no surprises in municipal court. Municipal Court actually operates fairly lean for the work that they do. So I won't bother going down each line item on that. Yeah, personnel cost for those two staff members, and then the operational costs below there, which are next to nothing for that size, largely clerical. They do have some travel and training they'll do this year, but the training is free, absent of some travel. We like free, so we'll take that free. Next page, 10 of 22, Finance Department, also operates very lean. The cost below that, as you get down to the, the operating, the biggest number you have out there is $21,000. That's for the, um, the audit. So when they come and do the audit, that's the $21,000 that we pay for, for that. Everything else is small. Planning zoning inspections, again, small operationally, no issues there. The planning commission is included, their compensation is included in there, $21,000. Operations on the next page, planning, plant commission, obviously, our plant department has several line items, but they're, they're small numbers. They operate fairly lean as well. A couple of them are the largest one that you'll see down the way. Software, middle of the page, $15,000, that's the IDT plans system. That's our recurring, every-year cost for that software system. And then $72,000 for engineering services. Right now, we are projecting this year at about $86,000 for engineering, but we're going to have to dial that back some. Again, we're balancing the budget somehow, so we brought that back down to 72. I get with our engineers to make sure they understand that, but we just had to, you had to find the dollar somewhere. So they'll be willing to help us with that, but we have to have the help. A plotter?
Yes.
A plotter is a large, a large printer map system, so you can go in and print a subdivision, other, other thing like that. It's just a big printer, effectively. Next page, 13 of 22, Police Department, total personnel cost, $1,233. The biggest recovery that we've seen in that is, you may recall, we changed our compensation. Is it related to overtime to comply with the Fair Labor Standards Act? We made some changes on there. Our budgeted overtime for the police department in our fiscal year budget two years ago was Our budgeted overtime for the fiscal year going forward is $17,500. So that policy absolutely paid for itself as it needed to. We're compliant federally, but it also saved us an unbelievable amount of money as we got through that process. That was just, that was just legacy program prior to any of us arriving, but we did save significant dollars there. Moving down the line, you get into operations on this page. Personal expenses, the?
$16,000.
$16,000. There, you'll find that in the fire department as well. There's an $800 per sworn police officer and per certified firefighter incentive that comes from the state every year. That's not city money, that's state money, and it's passed through to us. It's shown as grant money to the right. Every year, those police officers and firefighters get that $800. We get a check from the state, we distribute that to the employees. That's, there's no budgetary effect, although we have to, we have to show the expense.
That's for training, if they do so many.
That's right. They have to qualify to that, and the ones that qualify get that, get that money. Again, police and fire, that's, that's, just comes to us, we distribute it. That's Personnel Expenses, other. Into the operational part of the budget, there's nothing really of any substance, a large number in operating. The police department does a really good job of operating as lean as they can. We've, we've made some pretty good investment in the police department over the last couple of years, as far as training, equipment, making sure that they function as they need to, like a real police department. We'll get into the capital part of this in a few minutes, but operationally, the police department and fire department do a really good job within their budgets of making sure that they, they function, but they do it in a fiscally sound manner. The, the next page, 14 of 22, is a continuation of the police department. The largest line item in this is fuel at $50,000. That will likely be decreased some because of fuel prices, but you budget for what there is. Until we replace some of the vehicles, which we'll get to in a second with the replacement plan, the, the, any fuel savings we see will likely be used by repair and maintenance on our vehicles as they age. So there'll be a zero sum likely throughout the course of the year. Everything else pretty much remains the same for them. You'll see some dollars out to the right. The police department largely functions out of the operating fund and out of the drug fund. We do these in such a way where we, we charge these expenditures to those funds. So if you see something, alternative weapons, as an example, $15,000, that's $15,000 in a lease that comes from the drug fund. That doesn't come from general fund taxpayer dollars. So everything, the police department, the drug fund is categorized as drug fund. Everything that's operating is categorized as operating. That's how you get those beginning and ending balances and expenditures on page one. Again, nothing else jumps, jumps out here. You will see in the middle of the page, LISO acquisitions, $5,000. LISO repairs, $5,000. So that'd be a net investment in the LISO program, as we're looking at this, of $10,000 with a projected return on that investment of $125,000. So I, I think anybody would make that investment, given the opportunity to do so. Next page, 15 of 22, we get into the fire department. Again, all of their, all of their expenses are standard. You will see that the personnel expenses are a little less than the police department. That's just because of the fewer number, 21 in the police department versus 18 in the fire department. But again, it's grant money that comes in or out. And then moving down the page, you'll see they're standard, getting into operations, there's no large number on this page. There are several line items that come into here. The reason we have all these line items is to make sure we understand the true cost. You may recall that we discussed a few years ago, all the budget line items in all the departments were so small, there were so few of them, that you really couldn't get a true idea of what it cost to operate a department. As an example, they may have a uniform budget of $10,000 and a fuel budget of $10,000. Well, if they'd only spent $5,000 in fuel, but they'd spent all of their uniforms, they'd go buy another $5,000 in uniforms but charge it to fuel. So it looked like you spent $10,000 in fuel and $10,000 in uniforms, when in reality, you spent $5,000 in fuel and $15,000 in uniforms. So to eliminate that, we, we have these line items, and we encourage our departments to appropriately charge whatever they're purchasing to the appropriate line item, and then we can adjust that, so we know, we know what the true value of operating a department is. That becomes hugely important as we talk about growth. If we're going to build another building for police and court, we need to know what the operation of a police and court building would be. If we're going to build another fire station, we need to know what the operational cost of a fire station would be. Fire truck, operational cost of fire truck. So we have them charge that to those individual line items, we recalculate during the year. Mr. Rainey, do you have a question? Volunteer pay is exactly what it sounds like, volunteer pay. Correct. Under state code, not, not Fairview rule, but under state code, there's a $1,000 subsistence per volunteer per year that's compensated. We budget for 10 volunteers, we pay that out annually once a year in December, so. The next page, 16 of 22, again, standard operating for the fire department. There's nothing that jumps out here. All these are fairly standard. You can run down the list of those in the interest of time, and we have a month to kind of hit every line item. But there's nothing here that is of any surprise whatsoever. These are standard operating. And again, the purpose of these is to give each area that we could spend money a place to show that charge or that cost, so we can appropriately monitor each one of those. So although the numbers may be relatively small as it relates to the budget, they are important for planning purposes, and that's the reason we put those in there, to make sure we can track as best we can every dollar, every direction, and make sure we adjust. And then every department within this has a sundry account. In the event we missed something, rather than charging something to a wrong line item, charge it to sundry, and then every year, we go back and review all of the charges to each sundry line item to see if that needs to be a recurring line item in the budget, or if it really was just a sundry one-off account or charge. Utilities for the fire department, again, next page, 17 of 22, no issues there. Those are, those are standard. Public Works, as we get into the budget for Public Works, you'll see the standard, the standard personnel, all the line items are the same as they're related to all the other, all the other cost on there. The Personnel Expenses, other, is a plug number in there, in case we have to do some additional training, or there's some other benefit that comes to them that we need to address. We have a line item for that. Getting into the operations, you'll find that Public Works operates very lean. They, to look at the amount of work that they do, and there are two pages of it, but if you look at the amount of work that Public Works does, the work product that they deliver, and you look at the line items for budgets, they're, they're pretty small. They do a pretty good job working within the resources they have, exceptional, in fact. Page 19 of 22, the same, fuel and oil, the largest on there, $18,000. We expect that to come in some. If there's an area to cut, if we get into the year and we recognize that things aren't going our way, and we need to bring something back, middle of the page, under operating fund, you'll see $25,000 for contract mowing. Right now, we contract a good bit of that stuff out because the crews just don't have enough time to do the chipper service, the road maintenance, all the things that they do, and mow some of the law, or the grass that we do. We do mow inside the park, these are things outside the park. Rights of ways, all that sorts of thing. If we just had to, to adjust, we could adjust some work schedules and change that right now. We don't see a need to do that. Rights of ways and other things look pretty good as part of their, as part of their mowing, but it's just difficult to spend two days a week mowing rights of ways, a day a week mowing rights of ways, and still do the chipper service to road work and all the other things that we do. So the general, the operating fund, relatively simple. When we get to the right side, under state street aid is where we get into some of the changes for the, for the year, and I'll explain what those are. The $300,000 you see for resurfacing, and I'll, I'll tell you what, what those are. Earlier this year, we approved $150,000 for, for the bid to resurface Old Franklin Road. We have intentionally held off on that until after July 1, just to make sure we understood what the future looked like financially. We think we can survive that, obviously. So in this coming year, have $150,000 allocated to Old Franklin Road, which we've already approved, and another $150,000 for two collector streets and a subdivision. Our roads, if you get out and drive, our collector streets are in pretty good shape. The exception to the collector street that needs the most work is Crowcut, but Crowcut's not going to be remedied with a resurfacing, it's going to be remedied with a rebuild. Crowcut has some extensive work to be done, particularly as it relates to the second half of Crowcut and the infrastructure under the road. So while not nearly as bad as Chester Road, Crowcut, a resurfacing of Crowcut is just not going to work, it's going to have to have some infrastructure work done. That takes us to the interior streets and subdivisions. We've done kind of a general review of the interior streets and subdivisions and driven those. The subdivision, the individual subdivision with by far the worst roads in, in the city is McCormick Grove subdivision. Not only are the roads bad, but they're bad to the extent that in one area in particular, we're afraid, it's down to the subgrade, and we're afraid it's going to get into the storm drain system where we've gotten to. So that resurfacing just has to take place, that's a part of our responsibility. The second areas is a section of Dice Lampley. You go out Crowcut or Cots Pike, take a left onto Dice Lampley, there's a section of about half a mile that is in horrible shape. We have no choice but to resurface that section of road. And then Wiley Circle, there's a connector street to Wiley Circle at the back of Western Wood subdivision that is worse than subgrade. That will likely have to be milled. If it's overlaid, it will work, but that's down to the, that's down to the subgrade as well. So we know those three areas have to be done, but that takes a substantial, that gets a substantial amount of paving work done. All of a sudden, we're, we're everything survivable beyond that. If we're proactive on those, then we, we can kind of go forward with some work. But outside of that, every day that those aren't done is costing us additional money. It's just, the degradation is to the point that it's, it can't sustain itself. There's not really a priority order, just, just that list. Franklin, Old Franklin, McCormick Grove subdivision, Dice Lampley, Wiley Circle. Now, once we get into this, let's, let's say that, let's say that we're, we're there, and we have a remedy for this, some of this on the second page going forward, but we're also hoping that the revenue is not decreased by the 25%. You know, right now, we're bringing in $300,000 a year, we're projecting to 25. So let's say that we're wrong on that. So, let's say that we're wrong on that. The 300 holds. Well, then, that's 75 to our good this year, plus what will come in next year, so we can pick up with a second round of paving to be done. So, there's some forward thinking to how we're doing this. We're just kind of how do you manage it when you're pointing that you're having to manage it $250,000 or $300,000 at a time? $20,000 for miscellaneous projects, because you're always going to have a miscellaneous project that come up. You're going to have a culvert repair or some other thing that has to be done. $5,000 for equipment rental, because we're, the backhoe and the other equipment that we have, the equipment rental, we just, at some point, you're going to have to do that. We had to rent equipment to do some of the work over on Glen Haven. We just don't have the equipment that we need to get there. Equipment is expensive. So, it's cheaper for us to rent right now. Next page, 20 of 22, Parks Operating. Standard operation for the parks. Nothing that jumps out on there. We're all okay with that. Those numbers are small. If you move to the right side of the page, you'll see $6,000 and $6,000. $6,000 comes out of the Park Fund for the trail maintenance. That's recurring every year. That's just what it costs to do that, replace gravel, culverts, that sort of thing, keep the trail safe. And then, $6,000 for lakes maintenance. That is primarily the dam inspection to the two lakes with dams in Bowie Park and Veterans Lake. That also includes any repair. You may notice that the dam on Lake Van in Bowie Park, last year, we had to replace all the rock and stone and secure that dam. That's what that paid for. And then, to the right, you see out of the Tree Bank Fund, $10,000 and $20,000. $10,000 is for the park master plan, which we hope to be able to do this year if we can find a contractor who can do that work for us. And then, Forest Management Plan, $20,000. That would include the landscaping grant. If we apply for and get the landscaping grant, the landscaping grant provides $20,000 with a $20,000 match. So, we've budgeted as if we would get the full grant and be responsible for the full match. That's how we arrived at that line item. Next page, 21 of 22. Just to recap, are the utilities for Public Works and Park. No surprises there. Last line, 22 of 22, is the General Fund Reserve Account. You'll see that we've already shown that reserve fund to be funded at $700,000, which it is today, plus an anticipated $12,000 in interest generated from that account, which would get us to a year-ending balance of $712,000, which we believe would be, have us fully funded reserve until 2022. The last two pages are the capital budget. This capital budget feeds into the beginning and ending numbers that you saw on page one. As we go through this, you'll see the first line item, $31,000 for IT infrastructure. That's from the Governor's Grant. ADA sidewalk improvements, $38,000. The reason that that's in there is we hope to spend $38,000 on ADA improvements. But you also may recall that the seed money for that ADA improvement, sidewalk improvement plan, was the subdivision that paid for, paid into the sidewalk fund in lieu of developing the sidewalk or replacing the sidewalks. So, to properly account for those dollars, we made sure that we're showing all those dollars expended for sidewalks and they're not commingled in some other expense. That's why we had to show the expense of $38,000. Lease property improvements, we have that budgeted at $5,000. That's likely going to be closer to $1,000. We may make a line adjustment on there, but we'll be found there. Then, the next line item to the right, or you see $35,000 for City Hall ADA improvements. That will be the $35,000 for ADA plus, if we're able to fund it through reduced cost, the pad outside of that. And if that's the case, then we'll adjust that number to reflect that. Bottom half of the page, this is where we get into some of the expenditures. You'll see Police Department, replacement vehicles, $250,000. Capital Fund would pay for $200,000 of that. The Grants Program, the Governor's Grant, would pay for $50,000 of that. The majority, the vast majority of that capital fund of that $200,000 has been and will continue to be generated through the LISO program. That's where those dollars have come in. So, for every LISO dollar that's shown in revenue, we don't put those dollars into the General Fund. We put those into the Capital Fund. We make sure that those capital dollars are used for capital expenditures. In this case, patrol cars. That was the intent of the program and has performed again exceptionally well for us. So... That will purchase five and a half. And I'll give you the answer while there's five and a half. The patrol cars themselves, to be outfitted in basic form, run about $37,000. It takes about another $10,000 in other equipments, the other equipment, the lights, any radar equipment, any other thing like that. We do have some legacy equipment. Some equipment will transfer from vehicle to vehicle. If you can repurpose that, then you don't have to purchase it new. A radio would be an example of that. A light bar would be an example of something that's not legacy equipment. Because of the way Ford Motor Company has changed the Ford Explorer this year and because of their delay on getting vehicles, we're transitioning from the Ford Explorer Police Unit to the Dodge Durango Police Unit. We have to buy outfitting equipment anyway, but the Dodge Durango units appear to be, have a little longer longevity, and they also are a little less on the upfront cost. So, by transitioning from those, long-term, we'll save our cost on transitioning from the Ford Explorer to the Durango. Correct. There'll be a reduced lighting on those. 100%. And then, you'll see below there, MDT, $50,000. MDT is a mobile data terminal. That's a fancy word for computer. That's the computer that goes into the patrol cars and to the fire trucks. Those aren't your standard computer. They're drop safe. They're fairly robust. They're also fairly expensive and they require some equipment for that. So, we budgeted $50,000 in the Police Department. There have been no mobile data terminals or computers replaced in these vehicles since they were originally installed, these vehicles, in these vehicles when they were purchased. Some of them are running on 10 years, have a five-year service life. Five years inside a patrol car is a difficult five years. If you take nothing other than the temperature extremes from being parked in a patrol car, forget the use of vibration, that sort of thing. So, the Governor's Grant gave us the ability to kind of move forward with that as we get into a replacement, proper replacement for that. Now, we do know if we continue with the LISO program as it is and we get a jumpstart on replacement this year through the Governor's ability or grant to purchase one, then in two years, we have $133,000 in the Motorola Maintenance or the Motorola Lease that we have. So, what we'll likely do is when that Motorola Lease expires, that $133,000 that we're spending, they would simply become capital to go back in and get us on a standardized replacement schedule, rather than trying to figure out how we're going to buy eight or nine or 10 vehicles every three or four or five years. We'd simply do two or three a year and maintain the fleet as it needs to based on age and mileage. They will. The next page of that, we included $16,000 for mobile data MDT units for all the Fire Department units, as we have. So, yes, they would be upgraded to that. Patrol units? 20, give or take? Some of them are marked patrol. Some of them are just out of service. Functioning, I would say 20, but the majority of those were purchased in 2014. So, we've replaced some through some insurance proceeds, but the fleet, you guys got the fleet list and some of the mileage is already approaching 100,000. So, 100,000 miles on a six-year-old patrol car is a lot of miles. So, we'll have to get into that as we go forward. Unfortunately, it's just the cost of running a Police Department. Next page, the last page, $46,000 for the replacement vehicle for the Fire Department. That will again come out of the Governor's Fund, $16,000 for the MDTs for those units. And then, below that, Public Works Capital. The $10,000 of that for the multimodal sidewalk is the remaining $10,000 from the $48,000 we got for the sidewalk fund. So, if you take that $10,000 plus the 38 on the previous page, it gets you to the $48,000 that we received. To the right of that, $50,000 in capital replacement vehicle. We have sold some equipment in Public Works that we auctioned off. We currently have a dump truck on order that has the cover that we could, to replace the chipper pickup truck that we have today. We hope that truck will be in place by the end of this year, but those funds are in this current year's budget. So, if it comes in, there's no effect on this budget. It's paid for. This $50,000 that was primarily brought about by the sale of equipment will be used to purchase a Bobcat-type piece of equipment for Public Works so they can properly function and do those things. We have a backhoe. Backhoe really doesn't work in the broader sense that they need that, so we'll go back with the backhoe. And that will give us, other than another dump truck, which we'll need to purchase in 2021, the Public Works Department will be in pretty good shape then, equipment-wise, enough to function. Bowie Park Fund to the right of that, $50,000. Those are not spent dollars yet. What I've asked the Park staff to do, primarily Nancy, is to figure out if she were to spend $50,000 inside the park on a natural-type playground, because we've discussed playground opportunities, what does that look like, inside or outside, investment, however that goes. That was a budget that she was given. That's not an approved expenditure. So, I've accounted for any expenditure, but there's been nothing approved as far as that program. But from a budgeting standpoint, I need to show that dollar out there somewhere. To the right side of that, State Street Aid, $40,000. The $40,000 would be used for an infrared system. $30,000 would be for a trailer, heated trailer, so we could pull heated asphalt and maintain heated asphalt for up to 48 hours, I believe it's 48 hours. So, you wouldn't be cold patching all of these locations. And then, you would do an infrared repair. The other $10,000 of that would go to the infrared system. So, you'd actually do an infrared repair on your roads rather than a cold patch repair. The difference is a five-year life of a repair versus a few-week repair service life of your repair. And again, 500 and 500 for the grants funding on the end. So, we are one minute over. That is an overview of the detail for the budget. I'll go back in and make a few adjustments, make sure that that works. The item that you have for you for first reading tonight is appropriate for first reading. The second reading will be on June 4. If there are changes to the ordinance that you have, I'll get that out to everyone. We will get that posted. Once those are done, we will post this as a backup to it. And then, we'll have the public hearing and second reading at the June 4 BOC meeting. If anything comes up, thought, question, concern, idea, if you'll let me know, preferably if you'll email everyone, I'll follow up with that, do what we can to plug this in. But this is about as close as the staff can put together and work within the limitations and still provide the services we know we need to provide. Yes, ma'am? I'm sorry, I thought you were going to say something. Okay, absolutely. So, with that, we'll convene this real quick, get to the BOC meeting. Thoughts, questions, ideas? Absolutely. And thank y'all so very much for sitting through that, but it's very important.
Commissioner Burks. Commissioner Dawson. Commissioner Lucas. Vice Mayor Rainey. Mayor Blade. We have a quorum, mayor.
For the prayer and pledge.
Our most kind and gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and for all the many blessings you've given us. We gather to make decisions for our community. May we use only our best skills and judgment, keeping ourselves impartial and neutral as we consider the merits and pitfalls of each matter that is placed before us and always act in accordance with what is best for our community and our fellow citizens. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
The fourth item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Have a motion properly seconded? Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, Ms. Johnson.
Vice Mayor Rainey?
Aye.
Commissioner Burks? Commissioner Dawson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas? Mayor Blade?
Aye. Motion passes. Item five, public hearings. We have none this evening. Item six, citizens' comments.
There are none tonight, mayor.
None tonight, thank you, ma'am. Item seven, public announcements, awards and recognitions. We have none this evening. Item eight, staff comments and monthly reports, city manager report, Mr. Collins.
Yes, mayor, I have one item for you tonight. As you're aware, or two items, as you're aware, we've reduced some of the, the department reports until we get some direction on COVID-19 and we believe it's safe to have larger gatherings within the city halls. So I apologize for the delay in those, but those are done in the interest of safety. One item I have for you tonight, as you're all aware, we had some storms that came through the town, city over the weekend. Our crew is working pretty hard to follow up on all the chipper service that we've had to pick up on. We've maintained that schedule. However, there's some storm damage that our chipper service just cannot pick up, it's not designed to do that. But we want to provide a service to our citizens for that. So we will have on the website tomorrow, a location on Dice Lampley Road for the, what we call the city's out parcel. It will be marked with cones, we'll have the location there so everyone will clearly know where it is. We encourage residents who have storm debris, limbs, trees, shrubs, things of that nature that are too much for our chipper service to pick up, but items that they can still remove themselves, rather than them having to take that to the landfill out on Pinewood Road, they can tack that to our location out there, drop those off. We will then make sure that they are safely maintained on the city property. Obviously, we don't want to see any litter, debris, it's not to take a washer and dryer or wear a remodel in your house or do those sorts of things, it's for storm damaged debris on the outside, trees, that sort of thing. We will maintain that site until such time as we no longer need to maintain it. Obviously, and everybody, and everyone's been able to clean up on the first week, but we hope that for people who do have the opportunity to get out and clean up, they take advantage of that site and make sure they take everything out there to it. So that's all I have for you tonight.
Thank you, sir. Item nine, consent agenda.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Lucas, properly seconded by Vice Mayor Rainey. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, Ms. Johnson.
Commissioner Lucas? Vice Mayor Rainey?
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson?
Aye.
Commissioner Burks? Mayor Blade?
Aye. Motion passes. Item 10, old business, we have none. Item 11, new business. A, resolution 10-20, a resolution on utilizing funds allocated by state of Tennessee for local government finance grants.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and properly seconded? Is there any discussion?
Mayor, just to, just to confirm on that, the, I emailed all of you and there was some discussion about the purchase list or the projects list on this. As a part of the resolution, we're required to include that, that list. So you may recall that the list we've discussed was $31,000 for IT improvements, $35,000 for improvements to City Hall, including ADA accessible front doors, $46,594 for a replacement vehicle for the fire department, $50,000 in replacement vehicles for the police department, and $66,000 in IT upgrades, specifically mobile data terminals for our police and fire units. So if that list is satisfactory to the board, then we'll include that list as a part of Vice Mayor Rainey's motion and include that as part of our application.
Thank you, sir. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, Ms. Johnson.
Vice Mayor Rainey?
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson?
Aye.
Commissioner Burks? Commissioner Lucas? Mayor Blade?
Aye. Motion passes. 11B, resolution 11-20, a resolution requesting the Fairview, Tennessee municipal election be held in conjunction with the November 3rd, 2020 presidential election. Have a motion by Commissioner Burks, seconded by Commissioner Lucas. Is there any discussion?
Yes, mayor, one item. The, this election, as you may recall, has two elections. It has an election for a single seat and an election for three seats as we go forward. We don't want that to be confusing for, for Fairview voters, that's an important decision for all of them to make. We will produce a document we can put on the city's website, likely in a PowerPoint form. We'll go over that at the next BOC meeting and post that so everyone can easily understand why there are two elections within our elections, within that election, and understand what those seats are. So people consider voting or running for those seats, they'll understand how, how both of those work. It's just important that everyone understands we have an election, but there may be two elections within that, within that system.
Thank you, sir. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, Ms. Johnson.
Commissioner Burks? Commissioner Lucas? Commissioner Dawson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Rainey?
Aye.
Mayor Blade?
Aye. Motion passes. 11C, contract with ELS for Independence Day celebration.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Dawson, properly seconded by Vice Mayor Rainey. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, just as a note of understanding, if we're going to go ahead and approve this now in case we're able to have our third July celebration, we can cancel that up to, within just a few days of the actual celebration without any penalty.
Yes, sir.
But if we don't have it approved and try to do it later, we may not be able to, so
Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, Ms. Johnson.
Commissioner Dawson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Rainey?
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Commissioner Burks?
Aye.
Mayor Blade?
Aye. Motion passes. Item 11D, ordinance 2020-10, an ordinance to amend, an ordinance to amend the city of Fairview's reserve fund outlined in the city's fund balance policy.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Lucas, properly seconded by Vice Mayor Rainey. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, Ms. Johnson.
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Rainey?
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson?
Aye.
Commissioner Burks?
Aye.
Mayor Blade?
Aye. Motion passes. Item 11E, ordinance 2020-11, an ordinance of the city of Fairview, Tennessee adopting the budget and tax rate for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2020 and ending June 30th, 2021.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion by Vice Mayor Rainey, properly seconded by Commissioner Lucas. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, Ms. Johnson.
Vice Mayor Rainey?
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson?
Aye.
Commissioner Burks?
Aye.
Mayor Blade?
Aye. Motion passes. Item 11F, expiring board seats.
This is, mayor, this is actually not up for a vote tonight. This is just to make you aware, these are the seats that are expiring and we will be advertising for filling them, contacting those who are currently in them to see if they want to remain.
Would encourage our citizens to actively investigate and apply. Thank, thank you, Ms. Johnson. Item 12, communications from the mayor commissioners. Commissioner Burks.
I just want to thank Mr. Collins for giving us a nice rundown for the last two hours of the budget. It's much easier to understand, the last few years, it's basically the same budget we've done with just some different numbers. It's also good to see that we've done enough planning in advance to be able to weather a storm that we're dealing with now. Four or five years ago, we would not have been able to, in my opinion. But now we are. We can still provide the services that the citizens deserve as well as do it in a responsible manner. I also would like to thank all the city employees who have helped go through this budget and helped trim it down so that it is able to be done. And that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Dawson.
This week is Nurses Week and at the end of the 19th century, the lady with the lamp, as she was known more widely as Florence Nightingale, founded modern nursing. Thanks to her strict use of hand washing and hygiene practices while caring for wounded soldiers in the Crimean War, Nightingale and her helpers reduced the death rate from 42% to 2%, assuring in nursing as we know it today. This week, we recognize the important role nurses play in our lives celebrating National Nurses Week. And just a little bit more to, about that, we have over 3 million nurses working in the United States today. And nurses make up the highest percentage of US healthcare workforce. Although you might not imagine it, nurses are more likely to sustain, sustain a back injury on a shift than a construction worker. And they walk an average of about four miles per day as they care for others, especially during this worldwide pandemic that we have with COVID-19. We want to thank the nurses and celebrate them during this week. That's all I have, mayor.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Lucas.
Thank you, mayor. I want to reiterate what Commissioner Burks said. We are in a really good spot as a city when, when you look at this budget. I think any citizen that can, looks at this thing and remembers where we were three years ago, four years ago, knows we are in a much better place. So thank you to, to Mr. Collins and his leadership, to Tom and all the work that the other leaders have done to get this city a budget that is deserves and that will help us, like Derek said, weather these storms that come. And we've had quite a few the last couple of years that we weren't expecting and because of the planning that was done, we've been able to, to survive. So thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor Rainey.
Nothing tonight, mayor, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. I too would like to thank Mr. Collins and the city staff. They have embraced the budget. I was able to sit in a meeting with them today and it was refreshing to, to see their attitudes and we appreciate your service very much. At this time, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
So moved.